We are giving us three minutes of who you are and what you are going to bring to Hartford County Public Schools. So we're going to start alphabetically.
Would you stay seated?
Yes, please. As you feel comfortable.
That is fine. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jim Antel. I'm running for Board of Education for District C. It's nice to see this good group of people coming out on such a rainy day. I was saying to someone as I was walking in that I thought May was over and that May showers were done, but they do not. So I'm a lifelong resident of Hartford County. Born and raised by two wonderful parents who are actually both teachers. So growing up for me, it was, you know, it was not uncommon for me to see mom and dad at the kitchen table grading papers in the evening after they had made dinner. It was also not uncommon for me to be arriving at their schools during the summer, getting ready to prepare those classrooms each year for another school year. I think that's sort of helped to form my interest in wanting to not only run for the Board of Education, but also my career. I'm a professional social worker. I've had an opportunity to work in Hartford County in a number of different areas, starting off many years ago as a Child Protective Services worker with Hartford County Department of Social Services, moving through to working with Bill Maria as a child and family therapist, at which point in time I had an opportunity to work in schools throughout Hartford County, providing school mental health. So I had great opportunities to develop wonderful relationships with school counselors, teachers, just really, you know, fantastic experience. I was able to sort of parlay that experience and move and work down at the Governor's Office of Crime, Control, and Prevention, where I was responsible for federal and state funds addressing juvenile justice issues. So whether, again, that was needs that each county had across the state, it was my responsibility to, you know, help bring some technical assistance in my knowledge around juvenile justice issues. So again, I'm a proud father of three kids, who, two of them have already graduated from the Hartford County Public School System. I got one more to go. She's going to be a senior this year at C. Milton Wright High School. And the experiences that I've had with the teachers there and their teachers and the stories that they tell has really been so encouraging. You know, I do think it's critically important that all students in Hartford County receive a high-quality education that starts with well-trained teachers, well-supported teachers, and those that go the extra mile. I mean, the stories that come home, you know, you know which teachers are the ones that are really connecting with the kids. And with my kids in particular, the stories that I hear of them, you just know. You know they put in the extra effort, you know that they feel supported by their principals. So that's something that I would hope to support if I'm on the Board of Education. So thank you all very much. I look forward to the opportunity to have a conversation today. Thanks.
Good afternoon, all. I'm Dr. David Bauer, and I'm running for Board of Education, District B. Starting with my background, I've been a student for most of my life. I grew up in Oak Ridge, Tennessee, which is an interesting town. I attended public schools, came through 12. I encountered the full range of teachers, from absolutely outstanding down to shouldn't have been teacher. For college, I went to the Georgia Institute of Technology in Atlanta. I stayed at Georgia Tech for my bachelor's, master's, and PhD in computer engineering. After earning my doctorate, I moved up here to Maryland. I live in Abingdon. I work at the Aberdeen Proving Ground. I'm married with one child who attends William S. James Elementary School. My teaching experience is admittedly quite limited, consisting of tutoring in high school and college, and then seven semesters as a graduate teaching assistant in two lab classes. Moving on to educational philosophy, I'd like to start by saying that while I strongly support education in general, I'm still very flexible on the specifics. For example, I have not yet formed a position on instructional facilitators, on technology in the classroom, or on school resource officers. In general, I'm open to data and research. I've read a lot of educational research and discussion, and I do not believe that we are following best practices. And by "we," I mean the county, the state, and our whole country. I think that some standardized testing is vital, but we have too much of it perbed. I believe that children can learn lots exploring on their own. But if we want them to know anything specific, we have to specifically teach it to them. I believe the same about adults, too, whether teachers, other staff, or parents. As such, I strongly believe in teacher development and that it should be well-funded. I would also like to see programs for parent training, actually, although I understand that's not a budget priority. I do not believe one size fits all metaphorically. I'm well aware of the need for various special education programs, and I support expanding the vocational training options in this county. The top three areas I'd like to inspire or contribute to are, first, data-driven discussions on how to best achieve student success, not just in academic tests, but in life. I'd also like discussions on reducing student inequality and the achievement gap. And third, I'd like to work on improving the quality of life for students and staff across the county. Thank you all.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Carmelo, and I'm running for the Board of Education, Bel Air District C. Please forgive my voice tonight. I cannot get rid of this cold, so I apologize for my coughing. I have served and advocated for the educational needs of our county and community's children for almost 30 years now, both as a parent and as the HCPS legislative liaison, of which I retired last July. I advocated strongly in Washington, D.C., and in Annapolis for our county's children in making sure that laws were passed that were good for them, and laws failed that were not good for our children. I also served on the County Budget Advisory Board for about 12 years, the Corps of Service Agency, the Health Planning Commission, which focused on the new Upper Chesapeake Hospital, the Hartford County Council PTA's, as well as president of the Bel Air High School PTA, vice president at Ring Factory and Bel Air Middle School, where my children attended. Now, my grandchildren are attending Hartford County Public Schools, where I strongly believe we have tremendous teacher and staff working with our children. I have always believed all the children, all of the children in the community should be served equally. As one child is no more important than the other child. Education takes place in the classroom, and the school board's efforts must focus on enhancing and enriching what goes on in that classroom. We've gotten away from the classroom. We need to get back to the classroom, because that's where education begins in our county, and that's where education begins for our children. My proficiency in understanding the budget process, as well as the legislation, regulations, and policy can hopefully be helpful on the board. I do have one concern, to name a few, is that we're going to be losing very important teachers over the next five years due to retirement and for those teachers leaving our community. And I feel that we need a plan in place. I think that an effective school board plays an important watchdog role in keeping the school system on track and setting policies that affect our children. And I believe that working together as a board and community, we can all share the knowledge and satisfaction that we provide for the educational needs of all of our children. Thank you.
Okay. If you all will mind, I'm going to stand up because I'm more comfortable standing up. My name's Tom Fitzpatrick. I'm the incumbent in District F. Obviously, I'm running for reelection, as it says right here on my shirt. And if you all and the voters are kind enough to me, I'll be the longest-serving member of the board come the beginning of the next cycle. I originally was appointed to the board. I was appointed in 2011 to fill a vacancy. And that process basically consists of a lot of interviews and so forth and so on. At the time that I was appointed, my final interview was with the state superintendent, Lily Lowery. And she asked me what my priorities were as a potential board member. And I said, "Well, I'm going to do two things. One, I'm going to advocate for public education in Hartford County, because I believe very strongly in education in Hartford County, and I know that Hartford County Public Schools have been traditionally underfunded. And two, I'm going to advocate for the replacement of Haverd Grace High School, because I live in Haverd Grace, and every single one of my neighbors and friends and constituents wants that. And I actually told her that if that was an issue, that I wasn't going to take the job. Well, I got the job and went into the position pretty much blind, got introduced to my fellow board members, and then the capital budget landed on our desk. It was time to make the case for the school. Long story short, I had to build a lot of relationships with board members, with county council people, with the county government, with our staff, with folks in my community, advocates, and so forth. And together, we accomplished the goal. You know, five years on, if you drive up the road here, there's a new school rising out of the ground behind the middle school in Haverd Grace right now. So I get to check the box on the two things I committed to doing when Lily and Lowery asked me that question. So now it's time to answer the other question, which is advocating for public schools. I've always worked as a strong advocate for our administration and for the school system. I've advocated for more funding. What I think we need to do going forward, and what I plan to do if I'm re-elected, is to pursue that issue. Right now, Hartford County ranks between 23rd, either second or third from the bottom for people spending for public schools. Now, we are generally rated third or fourth from the top. We need to change that. And we need to change that through a combination of advocacy and public education. We need to make a business case for more money for Hartford County Public Schools, and we have to make it an economic development argument, because we can't make all of the issues that we're going to talk about here better and solve them unless we have the resources to do that. And right now, we do not. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Art Caf, running for the Board of Education in District E. And I want to thank Together We Will, Hartford County Upper Chesapeake, for hosting this great forum, and I want to thank you all for coming. I also want to thank Together We Will for their great advocacy before the Board of Education. I'm running for the Board of Education because I simply want to make our schools the best that they can be. I have two children right now in Hartford County Public Schools. One just graduated from C. Milton Wright. One's a sophomore and will be a junior in the fall. And I believe we can do a lot better. Now, I have been active in the community. I've spoken before the Board of Education several times. As I mentioned, I'm a parent, and I've been active in PTOs and PTA's. I'm currently the social media chair for the C. Milton Wright PTO. And I've also volunteered for the C. Milton Wright High School band. And I've also been a former member of the Board of Education. I served on the board from 2012 to 2015. I filled a vacancy when unfortunately Dr. Leonard Wheeler passed away. And that was back in 2012. He was a great advocate for education, and I definitely strive to fulfill his legacy when I was on the board. I work for the federal government as a federal civilian. I also serve in the Army Reserve, where I have the great honor to serve as a colonel and commander of a reserve unit. Now, you might ask, how on earth can I have the time to be a member of the Board of Education and be a commander of a reserve unit? Well, I switch out command this summer. I changed command at the end of June, so I will have the time unquestionably. And I'm very honored also to serve currently on the Hartford County Commission on Veterans Affairs, to which I was appointed by the county executive. And there, I'm also the social media person, and I also advocate for veterans and support them 100% as I am one. I also need to mention here, the mention of my military background does not constitute endorsement by the Department of Defense or the Department of Defense, by duty directors, so there you go. I'm running to represent all, and I will be an advocate for the entire district. District D is a very special district. All the districts are special, but we have the city of Aberdeen, which needs to be well-represented, as well as the important communities of Churchville and the neighborhoods east of Bel Air, where I reside. And my issues are the same issues that myself and this organization and others have advocated for before the Board of Education. Small class sizes are extremely important, for example, and this in particular enhances learning by students. And it's important to keep that in mind as we go through the budget process this year. Increasing teacher and staff compensation also is a very important issue, and I will fight for our teachers and staff if I get back on the board. Fixing the budget process is also very important. I think we need to look at reform in the budget process. Safety and security is also another important issue. And transparency also in the budget process. And transparency in Hartford County Public Schools is extremely important. I am a good listener, and I will listen to all before I make my decision. I will act ethically and not be beholden to any group, but I will consider all viewpoints before making a decision. I will fight for our students, our teachers, staff, and parents. So I look forward to hearing your questions today. Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you as well for having this meeting and for allowing us to be present here and hear your thoughts and concerns and begin to develop a plan moving forward. Whether or not we are the ones that, who are placed in the position on the board to serve the county, we need to continue to serve as citizens and residents of Hartford County. To that, Sonia Karwaki, I am running in District F, and my esteemed opponent just spoke to you here. I've lived in Hartford County for 38 years now, will be 39 this year, actually. My family was raised here. I have three children who are graduates of Hartford County Public Schools. They attended the Edgewood Area School System. And again, I think that schools are, the schools here are absolutely amazing. There is so much potential of the staffing that exists in our buildings and so much promise for our students. But we do need some things to be tweaked as we move forward or to be just changed. I have five grandchildren who are residents of Hartford County and will be or are attending Hartford County Public Schools already. So I have two sets of twin granddaughters who are 11 years old. I have to brag on them a little. And I have a six-month-old granddaughter and found out today that I am going to be the proud grandmom of a little boy come November. So I'm just thrilled that this legacy carries on. I worked for Baltimore County Public Schools for 23 years. I was able to retire after 23 years because I had two years of sick days accumulated that I never used. So I am truly dedicated to children and always have been. I think it's important, when you enter an organization, I was in banking prior to going into education, that you understand the entire organization. I have really been blessed to have had the opportunity to be in a classroom as a classroom teacher in Title I elementary schools, high-poverty schools, for the first 10 years of my career. I worked as a classroom teacher. I was a library media specialist. I then moved to the Southeast Area Office, because Baltimore County has five regions. And in the Southeast Area, I was the gifted and talented resource teacher for K to 12. I also led the GT office when Dr. Painter was called on to the Maryland State Department of Education and continued to support the efforts for gifted and talented education and finding children with those unique gifts who had been previously excluded from the opportunity to participate in GT. And that meant a lot of children from poor communities and children of color. So there are different ways to look for bits and talents, and we found that. I have been assistant to an area superintendent in Baltimore County and worked for the Southeast Area, which is the Essex, Dundalk, and Sparres Point area. I was then fortunate enough to accept a position of executive director of special programs under Superintendent Joe Hairston. My own offices gave me the opportunity to be responsible for a budget of $68 million. And in addition to that $68 million, which was my department, I also had to monitor the entire curriculum and instruction budget, which exceeded $300 million. So one of the things, one of my concerns is budget transparency. And believe me, I have a lot of experience, not only with office budgets, but with school system budgets. Okay, I'm going to cut it short here. But I thank you for the opportunity. I gladly, I will stay and answer any additional questions you may have after this meeting. My concern is equity. We talked about the achievement gap, and we've been talking about it for 30 years. Let's do something about it, okay? Thank you.
I'm going to follow my colleague, Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you don't mind. My name is Jansen Robinson. My name is Jansen Robinson, and I'm running for reelection to Hartford County Board of Education. I currently represent District A, Edgewood County. Prior to becoming a member of the board, I served as chair of the Edgewood Community Council. You guys may not, you may or may not understand what that is. It is a, because we are an unincorporated area and we don't have a municipality, the county executive appointed members of the community to serve on these boards to serve in a liaison capacity, if you will. We, the board is in the, in our community, and we share that information with the county. So why are the Board of Education? 38,000 kids, 5,000 employees. Half of the revenues that the county takes in go to schools. What better position, what more important position in this elected position other than that of Board of Education? You have an opportunity to make changes. You have, I come from Bad Boys and Residents. I got here through military. And let me tell you, I wouldn't be here had it not been for good, for education. And more or less, a good education. So I bring a different perspective, a different perspective, if you will, to the whole issue of education. I've been on this board for three years. And for the last three years, we've been doing the same thing that we've done the previous 20 or 30 years. And it has become so frustrating that we say these things. We say we want improvement. We say we want things to change, but we take no action to make it happen. We don't do that. We, 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 now, we'll sit here and we'll give you a good song and dance. We're going to, we're going to do, we're going to be articulate. We're going to tell you what you want to hear. But when I was a little boy, I grew up during the, when the Voting Rights Act of 1965. Now, you know, I'm telling you how to lie. My dad and I would walk into the polls. And I said, "Tell me who you're going to vote for." You know, I'm trying to be a little smart, but I want to say something about that. So we walked a little further, and he said, "Boy, you can tell what a man is going to do based on what he's already done." You can tell what a man is going to do, what he's already done. Now, I challenge you. I don't care whether it's Board of Education or a dog catcher, whatever it is. You make your decision, you think about that. What have we done? We can tell you what we're going to do, but look at what we have done, what we have not done. I became a member of the Board of Education because of decisions that were made on this school board that negatively impacted my community. Decisions that were made about funding and different policies, and they didn't care. Should say they didn't care. There was no concern given to how those policies would impact the community that I live in. And so I'm not going to sit around and just wait for that and just allow that to happen. I wanted to take some action. So I'm not going to sit around and complain about something. I'm going to get involved. So I got involved, I've been involved in the community, okay? Well, let me just do this. Let me say this. I didn't even see that.
I can't see it.
So I hope that I have an opportunity to share
I have two minutes of my time.
To share with you my vision and how I, what I plan to do as a member of the Board of Education.
Good afternoon. My name's Tamara Price. I run for the Board of Education. I want to say the impact of TWW across this community has been widely noticed. I should give props to my campaign manager, Cheryl Adams, who's up the tape. And, but I was at a board meeting just this week, and a senior leader in the community said to me, goes, "You're going to need to pay attention to these people. They really, they're really going to move things around." And I think that's all a service to you all. I have been in Hartford County over 20 years. I have a master's degree in organic chemistry, so I used to be a rocket scientist. I have three amazing children. Two are still in school in Hartford County Public Schools. My daughter's a third-grade teacher. The reason I want to bring up my kids is because I think that's part of the reason that I'm running. So I've always gone to Board of Education meetings because I think it's important to know what's going on in our community. The Scrabble incident certainly made me pay attention. You know, I had my head completely in the sand. Since I put my board nomination in, and I mean, this has happened since. I took my 15-year-old to his first funeral because one of his dear friends committed suicide. My 10-year-old said to me, "Mom, I need you to see this video." And he shows me this video, and his classmate, 10-years-old, is saying, "You need to take your poor pathetic family and move them to Mexico where they belong." This kid put it on YouTube. You know I called the school, and I've got a copy of it, but I won't show it. But anyway, but this stuff, it's rampant. When I go to the Board of Education meetings, what I hear from our students, because they're the ones I kind of tend to listen to the most, they want to talk about bullying. They want to talk about racism. They're not really thinking about school safety. They're not complaining about class size. All those things are totally important. I don't want to, but when I'm listening to our kids, which I think is part of what we need to do as Board of Education members, that's where our emphasis really needs to be. So I want to tell you why I'm the right person for the job. I'm the founder of the Women in Defense Mid-Atlantic Chapter. I'm currently the president of the Board of SARC, which is the Domestic Violence Shelter of Hartford County. Several years ago, I worked for a big company. I had a great title. I had 400 employees. And on a Wednesday, about a week before Thanksgiving, they came down and they said, "Tamara, you need to fire these people." They gave me a list, literally. They didn't ask me to fix the budget. They just said, "Go do this." So I did my job. I went in, I terminated the folks the next day. I took them all out. And, but it was at that point that I said, "This is unacceptable. There is no reason that these big companies can't put faces to it." I started my own business seven months later, and I hired back two of the folks that I terminated at that point in time. So I really get things done. I do enjoy Hartford County Public Schools. It's distressing to me when I see our teachers putting things on Facebook saying, "Hey, we really need more school supplies for our classroom." If one of my employees did that, I would be absolutely mortified. Right? That's not the kind of stuff that we want to, I've gotten notes. I have been working with Hartford County Public Schools for some time. I've been involved with the STEM Curriculum Committee Council and very involved with Project Lead the Way at Aberdeen High School. Another area that I really think that we should talk about with Hartford County Public Schools and the Board of Education is communication. I think there's a perceived lack of, there is a lack of transparency. And that brings apart trust issues, right? So I think that anywhere that we can increase the communication between the board and our entire school community with the rest of the community would be a huge thing for the schools. I don't know if they're doing anything wrong, but because of that lack of transparency, it's really hard to tell. Anyway, thank you all for coming out. I really appreciate your time.
I want to stand up because I'm short. And I want to show you that I can still stand. I celebrated my 50th birthday 32 years ago. I celebrated my 50th birthday 32 years ago. I don't hear words. I can see pretty well. Haven't lost my sense of humor, and my mind is still good. So, what I bring to, I was an appointed member. I'm involved on the political side, that's probably the reason I was appointed. But I came, I asked for this, because I didn't like what I saw. And I think we have a, after three years of serving on this board, I think we have a great school system, and we do a fantastic job. And that's proven by any objective measure that you wanna use. But, our face does not look good to the public. And we are not transparent. We like to do things behind closed doors. As you will see in the next board meeting, we'll be making a big apology for not following the Open Meetings Act. And, um, it's well deserved, in my opinion. I worked in trenches, and I'll tell you, this is the first time that I've ever had to do this. And it's new to me, and I don't like it. I like the trenches. Jan森and I work together a lot, and we've talked about diversity. Let me give you a little background about myself. I can't, I started Social Security, I worked for American Airlines, went to work for Social Security Administration, retired there a long time ago. When I left, we had a budget of about $50 billion. So, but, we made decisions that affect millions of people, but you never saw the faces. This is, every decision we make, people are in your face. We have gotten, literally, hundreds of emails, some of them, a lot of them, dozens and dozens of them, along with narrative that made convincing cases for the mentors, for the library technicians. And, um, it's, it's just amazing, the interest of our staff, particularly teachers. I came here, one of the things that motivated me, it made no sense to me that we weren't paying step increases, just didn't make any sense. And this Kathleen Mader will tell you, that I was early on, working with Kathleen, et cetera, to figure out ways that we could get teachers paid according to contract. And that's where I come from, the trenches, and some of us believe that we should honor contracts. Just because you don't have to pay a bill, doesn't mean you don't pay it. And, so, probably enough said, well, in the diversity, Social Security, one of my jobs was hiring minorities. And I was in charge of some national searches to do that. That can be done. I was unfamiliar, when I came on this board with restored practices, I've become much more familiar with that. And I find that England and Scotland, et cetera, way ahead of us on that front. But, any event, that's enough. You wanna think of this, David, as common sense?
Let me just introduce Mrs. Rachel Goffier. I thank her for joining us this afternoon. Appreciate you being here. Mrs. Goffier is running for reelection District Eight. And I apologize for any rudeness and cutting you off, but we do wanna make sure everybody has a chance to get their voices heard. And many of our candidates have very kindly agreed to hang around after the forum is over, to talk with you, and answer any questions you have, or just to talk with you further. So, thank you.
I'm sorry I was late for the dramatic entrance. So, I guess the question at hand is, who am I and why am I doing this? And one of the reasons I'm doing this, actually, is why I'm late. My daughter was in a play, and today was the final performance, so we had to finish that, and that didn't end until 3:00, I'm the rising sun, and, yeah, I passed a queue of police officers. But I'm here now, so thank you for having me. But she and my son are the reasons why I signed on to do this the first time around. They are, they are my everything. My husband is a high school teacher, we both work for Baltimore County. I am a school counselor. So, the things that Together We Will does and talks about are things that I deal with in my job, and am trained for, and actually train other people for practically every day of the school year, and in the summer too, that's now we're 12 months. The reason I'm running again is because I still feel like there's work to do. I still feel like Hartford County has a ways to go. I still feel like there are things that I can contribute to what's going on. I absolutely believe that we need to be paying our teachers, obviously, I'm friends with a number of them, and they get in touch with me and tell me what's going on, which is very handy to have. I know how much teachers make in Baltimore County versus how much they make in Hartford County, because it comes home on my husband's paycheck, which he lets me see occasionally. I have lived in Hartford County for, I think we're up to 18 years now. I am not from here, I'm actually from the West Coast, I'm from Los Angeles. The school districts there are, are different. I grew up going to the William S. Hart High School District, everything's a little bit different, a little bit more like Pennsylvania, where you have the smaller districts for the elementary, and then the larger ones for the high school, junior high out there, they don't have middle school. So, if that's where I came from, we moved here, I moved here, met my husband, got married, and here I am in Maryland, well, I've been married 23 years, so 25 years later. We chose Hartford County because of the schools, because we liked the area, because I liked the space. I don't like the idea of being in a city. In terms of where we are now, I think that there have been some good changes in the three years I've been on the board. I think that, you know, we've at least moved forward, and we're not, not paying the teachers anymore, so that's progress. I think we're trying to open up dialogue. We get stopped sometimes. I'm always more than willing to talk to anybody who's willing to talk to me, but I also don't believe in talking a whole lot just to hear myself speak. So, with that, I'm gonna pass it on to whoever's next.
All right. We are going to jump into our question and answer portion of this. We are gonna come around and collect your note cards, but we do have some questions that were submitted to us prior to the event to get us started, as then we collect and organize your cards. So, I'm gonna turn things over to a forthcoming teacher, and let her get us started in the questions, as we take your comments for today.
Yes, hi, I'm a Hartford County teacher, my name's Kathleen Mader, completing my 34th year of teaching this year. And I noticed here, thanks so much, I noticed here on the questions that had been gathered beforehand, that there are nine categories of questions, and 90 minutes left, so we have 10 minutes a category, people. We are not gonna go on a length on anything, okay? So, keep those timers going. As I was listening and reading, and have collected some questions already, I would like to just challenge you all, and go down the line and hear from each candidate, one word. Can you limit it to one word? It's a trick question. One word. For whom are you advocating as a board member?
I'm advocating for the students.
That's more than one word.
She's a teacher.
That's the assignment. That shows.
Next iteration?
The county.
The students.
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 I'm gonna say teachers, because without the teachers, you don't need the students.
One word.
One word.
Kids.
Thank you. Okay, general questions for board members. Do you understand, or how do you understand, is the better way to say it, how, what is your understanding of the achievement gap in Hartford County Public Schools, or in your specific district? What are the causes, and what would you like to see done? Everybody, everybody gets a chance.
One more time, Marty.
How do you understand the achievement gap in Hartford County Public Schools, or in your specific district? What are the causes, and what can be done? How can they be addressed?
There are several different achievement gaps, so that would be the first part. The first achievement gap that most people tend to think of when they say achievement gap, is the one, and the one that is most spoken of, is the one between white students and students of color. However, that is not the only achievement gap. There is also an achievement gap between students who are on farms for a reduced meal plan, and students who are not. There is also an achievement gap between special ed and students who are not special ed. So, it kinda depends on which achievement gap you're talking about. One way or the other, I personally believe more resources to give to the students who are achieving. You talk about equity a lot. Everybody has a different understanding what equity means. Equity doesn't mean I'm giving you a hand up, it means I'm making it so that you're even with the other people. So, again, we're back to depending on which population you're talking about. The reason students who are on free reduced meals, for example, would need to be in schools, or need the assistance, because if you're hungry, you can't focus. I can tell you that from my own students, I work in a school that has, or the entire school has free breakfast. I work at a school that has a 71% farms rate, so I'm intimately familiar with what happens with that. If you're talking about special education, you're talking about students who need assistance, some more than others, and there are obviously variations on that spectrum, in what kind of assistance they need. Some need more intensive interventions, some need just a little bit of help with, "Hey, can you help me focus? Let's tap the table here, and I can help you focus," and a teacher can do that. Some need somebody right there to kind of, I don't wanna say hold their hand, but really keep them more focused and directed. When you're talking about the racial achievement gap, there's more to it. But there are a lot of studies out there, and there are a lot of resources out there to impact that. And that really is, having the great teachers that we have, giving them the resources that they need, time, time is really key. I feel like I'm talking a little bit too much, so let me hand it off to someone else. But I could go on more, if you wanna talk about it later.
I like to work with problems that have answers, easy answers. This one doesn't. This one's above my pay scale, I'm not an educator. I understand the problem, and I will go with people like Rachel who understand it, and that's the way I would be voting, with people who have a lot more knowledge of the educational system and this problem on achievement gap than I have.
I do think that Rachel articulated very well what the achievement gaps are, and the causes of them, well documented. Thank you, you made a very good conversation. I guess as far as what we need to see done about it, there needs to be priority placed on those, right? There's a lot of priorities, and I think we constantly talk about what are the most important priorities. It's gotta be bringing those priorities to the top, and funding them accordingly, so that you can make changes. Otherwise, you're just gonna keep saying more and the same.
Achievement gap. Again, you, you correct Rachel this.
Thank you.
But I have a, not different, but a, I guess, an expanded, expanded thoughts, if you will, on the achievement gap. First of all, I don't think that there have been, again, we use right, we use the right terminology, but our actions don't necessarily follow what we say, all, all, all the things that we do. I think that, first of all, has to be a recognition that there's a problem. You gotta, you gotta realize there's a problem before you solve it, that's first of all. So, whatever, whatever achievement, whatever the definition of achievement gap, or the problem is, you gotta identify it first. Then there has to be a willingness to, to, to address it. A lot of folks think that, again, remember I said, I, I got into this because there were decisions made that impacted my community, and without any regards to how it impacted them. A lot of folks think that if you give everybody a shoe, then they should make it, they should be able to, to, if you give everybody the same thing, they should be able to accomplish a mission, or do, do what they're supposed to do. That's not the way it works. What we should be doing is looking, is getting, giving people what they need to be successful. So, not that everybody gets a shoe, we need to make sure that everybody gets a shoe that fits. So, 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 you, you know, so some communities may need more assistance than others. And, and so I think that there has been this reluctance to, to, to identify the cause, and to say, "Well, we're gonna give everybody a shoe, we're gonna give everybody the same thing, and if you make it, you're making it, if you don't, you don't." That, that is a problem, it is a detriment to our community, and a detriment to our society, because what we've done, what we're doing, they will not engage in, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm approaching social security age, and you know we have this fight about the money in, in social security. I, I look at this simple, like Al does. The more people you have working who are productive, who are, who are working and paying in the social, social security, the less money and resources that those of us who are working will have to, have to contribute. So, it, it just seems to me that we, what we wanna do, we wanna have, we want to make as many people as successful as possible. And I just don't see that, I, I don't see, I don't see that, that kind of, of thinking, that, believe me, not just with the school system, it's a lot of other systems, but particularly with a system that, that can change folks' lives.
I have had personal firsthand experience in working and dealing with achievement gaps. My, pretty much my entire career has been devoted to children that live in high poverty communities, and that is one of the achievement gaps that we mentioned and talked about. What really concerns me is, I see money being thrown at things without the, really, without the forethought, without thinking about what do we want as the end product? I want children who are literate. I want a child who graduates from high school who's able to read beyond just a functional level. And that can be done, and I know it can be done. And it's not a matter of, sometimes, of spending a lot of money to do these things. First of all, you have to know your population. Data, we have so much data, it would choke my dogs. We have too much data. And the problem with data is it can be too easily manipulated to give you the picture that you want to paint, not the reality of what exists, okay? So, let me say that first. The other thing is that there are so many resources already existing in our schools. This achievement gap begins before children come to school. So, we need to look at this as a community issue, not just as a school issue. What can we do as a community to, to really get kids involved in learning, and help parents to understand what they can do? There are resources, you've got the public library here, you've got so many churches and outreach groups, and people that are already working at the preschool level to bring children into that literacy environment. But once they get to the school, what do we do? Because we're still seeing that gap. It's not gonna take more money, people, it's gonna take, using the resources that you have, and finding the best instructional strategies, and the teachers who can teach in the right manner to each individual child. That's what it really takes. I'm speaking from personal, first- I'm speaking from personal firsthand experience. And when I worked in central office, I was able to work with 73 of the 110 elementary schools in Baltimore County Public Schools in training teachers how to address the literacy issue and how to bring literacy to all children, special education, farms, regardless of race, color, religion. It can be done. And it doesn't take more money. It takes teacher training and it takes a system-wide effort of continuity in programming. And that's one thing that's missing here in Harford County.
There's no question that the achievement gap is a very important issue. And it continues to be an issue in Harford County. It's to addressing the achievement gap. Intervention is very important at a young age. And if you look at my previous service on the Board of Education, I advocated very strongly for intervention at all times. And we need to support our teachers. We need to expand greater resources on such areas as counseling to address the achievement gap. In fact, I don't think enough attention has been paid to the achievement gap over the past few years. So I'd like to do more, more in that area. Because it is critical that Harford County address the achievement gap. So, I also think that greater attention needs to be paid to the schools that are in the Title I, that are Title I schools and along the Route 40 corridor in particular. And that impacts District D in particular. Aberdeen has, the city of Aberdeen is part of District D and has several schools that are Title I schools. And there are several schools that have problems with respect to the achievement gap. So there's no question that we need to address this issue and pay more attention to it. I want to thank Rachel for explaining in greater detail what the achievement gap is. I also think that it's important to have representation among all groups. And that's why I'm running for the Board of Ed. I'm not an educator, but it's important to also have representation on the Board of Ed from all, from all different walks of life. And that's why we have a Board of Education that's elected. So, thank you for bringing up this question. I just also want to acknowledge my daughter who's in the back on the podcast.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to embarrass her. I won't stand this time. The, I think a lot that's been said already is relevant. But I think that this also provides me with an excellent opportunity to thank you all for being, for holding this forum and also for the work that you've done as advocates and for being in our meetings and for speaking out for specifically, a number of issues, but specifically for this one. I'm of that age where you can, where I'm old enough to remember pretty much the entire scope of the war over civil rights from beginning to present day. There was a few years ago when a lot of people would have said from beginning to end. That is rather obviously not the case. And quite frankly, I never really believed it was. You know, achievement gaps do exist. Achievement gaps exist in very different places, in different aspects, as my colleague Ms. Guardia pointed out. And it's also true that achievement gaps begin at home and often exist before the student comes to school. This is something that we as a school system can address, that we should address, that I differ with anybody who says it doesn't take resources because spending time and effort on teacher training is a resource which does cost money. But it's worth the investment. I believe that there is a tendency in many communities, apropos my earlier remarks, to have a sense of complacency over these issues. That over time, when people don't talk about things like gaps like this, that the assumption is that the problem is solved. Well, the events of just about nine months ago made it fairly evident that the problem is not solved at all and that it comes back to us out of the mouths of age. At the end of the day though, and I think this is what we're all talking about, one of the things that, this question goes right to the core of the role of public education in a community. And the thing that most people don't really understand about education in general is the fact that there is absolutely, that in most communities throughout the United States and in most countries throughout the world, there is absolutely nothing that reflects the core values of a community more than the way we educate our children. So if the achievement gap is an issue, then that is something that we have to look in the mirror first, and then we have to address it.
Well, they've said a lot. So I'm just going to expand a little bit on it. Basically, we need to close the gap. But I have heard, I sat through many state Board of Education meetings in Baltimore City on how they're going to do that. And I've yet to see them do it. Our children are everything to each and every one of us in this room. And our grandchildren are everything to each and every one of us in this room. And if we don't start meeting the needs of our students and our children and our grandchildren, the gap is going to widen. And if we don't start figuring out how to help the home, begin in the home. I mean, we have little ones that come to school hungry. And we have little ones that leave school hungry because they're going to a home where there's no food. And sometimes there's no electricity. So how are you going to help them expand on their education once they get there? And we've got to find a way to do that because we need to meet every child's needs in Harford County, not just a few.
So I'm going to preface my remarks by saying that, since I'm running opposed, sorry, since I'm running unopposed, I'm going to try to keep all my answers brief. This one probably brief for the most. I like a lot of what I have heard from down the table. I do believe that this is a serious problem, as I mentioned before. In terms of fixing it, it's a difficult problem. It's one that people have been trying to fix already for a while. I think it needs to be done by the broader community. And when you have kids basically coming to school who have just thousands, tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands, less words exposed to them in their lifetime when they get to school, it's difficult to make up for that. So, I would like us to, I guess, focus resources early. I don't think it's necessarily within the Board of Education's budget to do training or whatever for parents, for kids before they reach the school system. But I think that we can certainly advocate, advocate for the county to spend resources in that area. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with many of the things that my senior colleagues have said here. All the way via train of the microphone from all the way down there to down here. I, Rachel, you outlined the achievement gaps, you know, and set it up for all of us to kind of speak from. I do think that in trying to address it, you're looking at really addressing it from a systemic level as well as the personal level. From a systemic perspective, obviously, you're looking at, I think, training. You're looking at helping to give information to teachers on, again, what is this particular child going through in my classroom? So you have, you have data that talks about percentages. But again, when you get down to the individual level of a specific child, you know, what is going on? What are they bringing from their home? You know, what is, what's impacting this gap? So I think it's important for the school system to be able to provide that training, that perspective, that understanding for teachers. So that's the responsibility, I think, of the Harford County Public Schools. The other piece is that school and home connection. I think that are certain schools where that's working very well. I think other schools could learn from that. But as folks have said all along here, you know, that's, that's, that home environment, that family connection is certainly a contributing factor to the achievement gap. And it's a responsibility, I think, of the school system and those teachers that are able to excel and go that extra mile to figure out a way to make those connections. So it is done, I think, one child at a time, not looking at a huge data point and trying to break that down. I think by addressing the issue one child at a time is how we go about doing that. And I think the last thing I'll mention is just, I really appreciated Al's remark that, you know, in my position now, I work on a number of different teams, on a number of different very complicated issues. And it's important to know what you don't know. And it's important to know that you have experts on this board. You work as a group. You build these relationships and you know how to address an issue. Rachel clearly understands the achievement gap clearly would be a resource to go to as we're addressing an issue as a part of the board work. So I think that's an important point that you had brought up. So, thanks.
Thank you all very much for a thorough treatment of that question. So thorough, in fact, that I want to, I want to tell you that we have here about 35 really good questions. And if we took a minute for each of you, that's 350 minutes, I think. And we're not going to last that long. So I challenge you to imagine the red pen of your English teacher and get right to the meat of it, please. And just do your best because I think each and every question we have before us is extremely important. I do see a number of audience and pre-designed questions on one topic that many of you mentioned when you introduced yourselves. And we're going to ask for a 30-second response on this, which you should be able to do presumably if you've thought about this before. And the issue is transparency. People want to know, how do you ensure transparency? How do you improve transparency? And the way I'd like to look at it is, when citizens complain that there isn't enough transparency, just what is it that you think they want to know more about?
That's a good question. Yeah, I think each, it's a variety, I'm sure. But for the most part, they want to, they want to know, okay, how can my student get the best education that they need? You know, if there's a, if there's a gap, if something's happened, either they're not, they're not learning something, they don't have access to something. That's what drives them to ask this question and dig in a little deeper. So I do think it varies from person to person. And ultimately, especially lately, a lot of it comes down to funding. So folks want to know how the dollars are spent.
I think that people want to know where money's going, how decisions are being made, and why decisions were made a certain way. What else did the board know? Did they talk about what happened basically behind the scenes in private email? What other comments did the board get in private emails that the public doesn't see at the board meetings? So those are the main things, I guess, for transparency.
When I hear transparency, I want to know why decisions are being made. And I want to know how those decisions were made. I don't, I, I'm going to tell you, I honestly, in transparency, am not smarter than a first grader. Because I cannot do math in the first grade books. It's hard today to understand what's going on in our school system. And it's hard to understand when you're choosing a new superintendent, why you weren't more involved in it instead of just a few people showing up. So bottom line is, I think we need to open up a little bit more and let people know what's going on in our school system.
Well, I can tell you from the email that I get, and I get a lot of it, that what people are looking for varies from case to case and from issue to issue. And it will be different two weeks from now than it was a month ago. Nonetheless, I do want to make a point that I think is important. Harford County Public Schools does a lousy job of messaging. We have always done a lousy job of messaging. It was that way before I was on the board and it's been that way the entire time I've been on the board. And quite frankly, it's something I'd like to change.
Yes, I advocated for transparency. And I've addressed specifically what I mean by transparency. And I've spoken about it before the Board of Education. Well, first of all, the Board of Education needs to frankly hold its meetings properly under the Open Meetings Act. Also, they need to come clean with decisions that are being made behind the scenes. For example, I've heard, read the media and I've heard from the Harford County Public Schools that some decision that would have been made with respect to cuts that are going to happen on Monday. Well, we have no idea what these cuts are. I have no idea what these cuts are. So there needs to be greater transparency there. And also, we need to stop it with gimmicks that are coming up at the last minute on the board. And such things as the drama fee amendment that was, that came up before any notice. And in fact, I fought for, against the drama fee when I spoke for the board. And I was chewed out by a member of the board for doing that. So nobody, nobody can say that I have not advocated for transparency. I've been very clear about what transparency means. Thank you. And thank you for raising this question.
And basically, everyone who has preceded me has given a very clear definition of transparency. I want to know what we're spending, why we're spending it. And my particular concern came up with the math series that was purchased. And I'm still saying to myself, my God, who thought that was a good idea?
So. So, let me just tell you what I'd like to do in my next term to try to address transparency. Part of the problem is, not part of the problem. The fix, part of the fix is creating an opportunity for the stakeholders to be at the decision-making table. One of the things that we do, we should be doing more to open up this process, is to create some vehicle, some way that we, that we allow the public and the other stakeholders a seat at that table. Rather than a top-down decision-making approach, we need to be able, we need to have a, 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 30 seconds.
When I think about transparency, I think about proactive communication. Right? We could definitely talk about the board. It's clear that the media is not helping the Board of Education. I'm not even on the board. I could see it. You know, that's certainly an area where clearly we need to collaborate more with the local media so that we can continue to open that up. In addition, I think about communication when things happen in our schools and how they're communicated. I indicated earlier that my son had a friend that committed suicide. That happened on a Wednesday. Granted, it was right before Easter. But nothing went home to the parents until the following Monday. It just didn't feel like, I just think that that transparency means a lot more communication.
Yes.
Well, it could start with transparency between the administration and the board. We frequently learn things when everybody else learns. But I think transparency, when people want to know who's on what side, they want to know who's making the decisions on issues. I think that's probably as important as anything in terms of transparency. Where do people stand?
I would agree with that. I'm going to keep my eye on Rachel though, she's going to keep me honest. And I could talk about this for a while too. So, we absolutely get tons of email. We absolutely hear from friends in our community. We hear from constituents in our community. We hear from the folks that show up at the meetings. And I think what the overwhelming issue is, is the communication piece. I think there isn't enough of it. I think there needs to be more of it. We certainly have had moments behind the scenes where we're sitting there going, why aren't we telling people that? Is there a reason why it seems like we're hiding it? I've certainly asked questions myself about it. So, there you go, I'm done. Okay.
Very much. Good job, Anya, red pen. Good job, guys. The next topic is about money. We all know that we say we need more money. We all talk about budget priorities and what is the most important thing. And people that come to your meetings and advocate for various budget priorities and retain teachers and recruiting teachers. And one member of this audience said Harford County schools are ranked as among the bottom of per pupil spending. So, if we need more money, where do you think it should come from? In the budget and the amount of money that we honestly have, what are the priorities that you would like to see protected? You have 10 seconds on that. You might, you might get a double amount of time on that one because it's kind of two questions.
Yeah.
No pressure.
Right? Okay. So, money, we need more of it, yes. We need to be spending the money we're given.
We need to be spending the money we're given appropriately. There were decisions made about money that some people might not know about where a previous county executive took things out of, I know, I know, took things out of the operating budget and put it into the...
Capital.
Thank you. The capital budget so that it was no longer maintenance of effort. So when maintenance of effort money goes down, there's an issue there, so that's the first thing. The second thing is, yes, we do, we don't have the ability to tax. Districts in Pennsylvania have the ability to tax, and there is in fact an education tax, and there's a difference. There are places up in New Jersey where the school district's taxed, and it is an actual school district tax, and that is how they do that. Maryland doesn't have that, and I'm not suggesting that we need it. I am suggesting, however, that we need to value the education of all of our students, and if we want that for our kids, then yes, that kind of results in more tax.
Well, budget is one of the areas that I pride myself on understanding. First of all, with the size of budget we have, it should be easy. The bigger the budget, the easier it is to budget. In terms of priorities, I don't know how, first of all, the board is not allowed to set priorities in this system as we now have it. We don't have an opportunity to do that. So what happens, we come to the end of this process, and it's chaotic right now. We have to decide whether or not to cut mentors, whether or not to cut library texts, et cetera, and those decisions should be made during the year. They're not budget decisions, they're management decisions. And we just need, when you figure that the least important things in our budget, what we want to cut is teachers' pay, we want to cut under the contract, and we want to cut people to support teachers, and people that work directly with students every day. That doesn't seem like the least important thing in what we do to be...
I think Al's spot on. I think it'll be interesting, I think certainly, teachers have to be our number one priority, right? They're the ones that we've got to take care of, they're the ones that are taking care of our children, they're responsible for education system. I think it'll be interesting to have a new superintendent placed and where his priorities are because he doesn't have that long history of knowledge within our public schools, whoever it's going to be, he's coming from the outside, is my understanding. So I think that the budget priorities could change. I definitely think the emphasis has got to be on our teachers and those that support our teachers. That's it, it's easy.
So I propose that we engage in what's called the zero-based budget process. So what happens is you identify those things you have to do first, and you assign dollars to it, and you go, and so what happens at the end is you have no money and you have all of these things, and so then you can, then you have an opportunity to identify, you prioritize, and now you have an opportunity to advocate for dollars. But let me just say, the reason why the board doesn't do what it should be doing has nothing to do with the superintendent. It has everything to do with the majority of the members on the board. So what happens is it takes five people to move an issue. If five people don't, if you can't get five people to move an issue, it's dead. So the reason why the board doesn't set priorities, and if not, we can't, shouldn't blame the superintendent, we need to blame the people that are on the board because we make the decision. You guys are, you're not interviewing the superintendent, you're interviewing us. So that's the reason why we don't have that. And again, the budget, the zero-based budgeting process, you've got to have a strategy. You just can't say, we need more money. You can't do that. Look at the world we're living in, look at the community that we're living in. You've got to have a strategy in order to advocate for dollars. And this thing about what you've been hearing about, we're going to go and advocate dollars, folks have been doing that for a long time. Hasn't worked.
And on that note, I absolutely agree. For me, the budget priority has to be the most effective teachers in the classroom for our children. We need to stop hitting the classroom every time we're running low on money, and that's exactly what I've seen happening here in Hartford County for about the past 20 years. It needs to stop. The other thing is, 50% of our county budget already goes to education. You can't get blood out of a tourniquet, okay? So we need to be, and goes back to what I said before, we have the resources, let's use them more effectively. We don't necessarily need more money, we need to think of better ways to spend it.
This is another very important area, and we need to frankly press for greater allocation of funds. We shouldn't give up right now from the state. We should continue to advocate for more money from the state. The casino money needs to come to schools, and frankly, we need to advocate for a change in the funding formula so Hartford County gets its fair share. Hartford County has not done its fair share in the money that is allocated to schools. And we also need to do frankly a better job with working with the county executive and the county council in getting additional funding. And my priorities include small class sizes, protecting teacher compensation, fighting for those teacher-staff increases, teacher and staff pay increases, and we're going to have to examine the budget very carefully so that those things are protected. Thank you.
I may violate my time, and I'm going to go back to my original remarks. This is a cultural issue. This is a priorities issue for everybody in Hartford County. It is true, and I agree with everyone who said that the number one priority in terms of resources for our schools should be spent on teachers and in the classroom as a first priority. I think everybody on this panel will probably agree with that at the risk of me saying so. But the truth of the matter is, I'm the guy who said that Hartford County is second to the last in per pupil funding. We are fourth from the top in per capita income.
Yes, yes.
Yes, that is true. I don't feel that way, but it is true, and it is one of the things that hurts us in the formula, in the state formula, because per capita income is one of the things that's counted in that. And frankly, we have, apparently, we must have a small number of very rich people here. I don't, I may know two or three of them, but I don't know them really. But in any case, we do not have, in my time, this county has never allocated more than 52% of its budget to public education. Now, let's contrast that to where all the jobs from BRAC went, Anne Arundel County, Howard County, Montgomery County, where the funding levels from county government are 65, 60%, and in the high 50s respectively. Now, if you want a really good school system, you just can't continue to count on having dedicated people who want to live in the county because that's essentially what we're doing right now. We have to make a change.
Well, this is an area I know a lot about. And I can't, I don't have the time to get into it, but I'm happy to stay after and answer some questions about where the casino money goes and how the formula works at the state level and the county level. But the bottom line is, if we don't start negotiating in good faith with our teachers, we're going to keep losing more of our teachers, and that's the bottom line. If you promise a 2% raise, you give a 2% raise, you budget that. As far as the state, yes, we are considered a wealthy county, and that's why our money is lower from the state. The county gives mazes of effort and not a lot above that, so there's no, there's no more money that comes, and if we don't start getting more money from the county and from the state, I don't know what we're going to do in the future with our children. But what I do know is we have really great teachers and our children are thriving.
Keeping this quick, my top priorities for a budget, teachers, support staff, and facilities. In terms of getting the money, I've actually started comparing the Hartford County school system budget to some of the other surrounding county's budget. Will I find anything to cut? I don't know yet. Problem is, we aren't getting a lot of funding from the state or the county. I'm hoping that will improve. Besides that, I've got my top three priorities.
Yeah, so priority-wise, competitive pay for teachers. We have to keep our teachers here in Hartford County well-trained, talked about this in safe schools. To me, those are the three top priorities. I think what, in order to get there, it's, at the last meeting, Joe Boswell actually laid out some of the differences between our county and other similar counties, Frederick, Carroll, I think one of, Howard was one of those as well, but it's the, again, there's a 6% to 10% gap between what Hartford County contributes to education and these other counties. So we need to make up that gap, and I think that starts with making sure that there is a strong relationship between the board and the county executive so that that position understands how the, how supporting teachers with competitive pay ultimately impacts a positive and successful school system.
Is school safety? Of course, everybody's concerned about that. There are a number of different aspects that we have questions about. I'm going to name three, and as you pass the microphone, you have to pick one. Area number one, what policy changes could be made to ensure that students and staff receive clear, consistent, appropriate consequences for racial harassment and hate speech? The bullying aspect that has been mentioned. That's one of the areas. The second area is SROs, School Resource Officers. What is your perspective on increasing the number of School Resource Officers as a safety message? What role do you think that they have? So it's bullying, School Resource Officers, and last, our schools have become increasingly dangerous due to shootings. What are your thoughts on how we can protect our citizens, our children, from guns? So you get to pick one. Bullying, SROs, guns.
Well, I currently work for the Department of Justice, so I'm very familiar with the issue, all of those issues, whether it's our funding of StopBullying.gov or the work that we do with School Resource Officers. I think that in the conversations that I've had with law enforcement across the country and the importance of an SRO is something that Hartford County Public Schools can certainly benefit from, and they do have a specific role. It's just unfortunately, when it comes to law enforcement, that position does not, number one, is not an accredited position. So you're taking it because you're an officer and you're just being added another task. They need specific training, they need to have the respect to do the job they do, which is to be that connection between the community, home, and the school, and to help with youth and law enforcement engagement.
I'd like to bullying as the topic. So if you look up preventing bullying online, actually, I think it's the Department of Justice, but it's one of the first ones that comes out, and it basically says, you need to change the culture, not just in the school, but outside the schools, in the community. That is what I would like to advocate for, is saying, what can we do as a whole community to fix the problems for the next generation, not just in the schools, but all of them?
I'm good with bullying, although all three are a big concern to me. My oldest son is 46, and he said to me on the day he graduated from high school in the 1980s, he said, Mom, he said, it's not about graduation, you never understood, it was not about graduations, it's about surviving high school. And I've never forgotten those words from him because my son had a good home, he had lots of supports, and he knew he could come to me for anything, as well as my other children. So bottom line with this bullying is it has to stop. I need a zero tolerance when it comes to bullying with these kids, and I'm not sure how to begin, but we need to do something about it because people have told me they write NSDE and they don't get any, the Maryland State Department of Education, they don't get responses back. People aren't hearing back when they file the forms for bullying, and we need to change that.